Thanks very much for having us. Really happy to be helping out the city in this process of getting outreach from the community in advance of the actual process of drawing lines. And Tony, if at any point you need to break in regarding quorum or any of those other issues, feel free to just do this out. Great. I'm going to do a presentation that many of the members of the committee have seen, this presentation or presentation like this, but it's really important for members of the community that might be logging in for the first time or going to their first redistricting meeting to kind of get a baseline of how the process works. And hopefully, this can avert some of the questions that we might receive and we can get right to the actual community of interest testimony. There we go. So our firm redistricting partners is working with municipalities across the state, cities, counties, and other local governments on the implementation of the Fair Maps Act, which is an open, transparent redistricting process that is being followed by all cities and counties. So we're really happy to be working with San Jose. The process that the city of San Jose has chosen to use is one that is allowed for under the new state law and wherein we have a redistricting committee or a commission that is going to be taking community of input, looking, community of interest input, looking at the communities within the city, and then putting together redistricting plans that will then be sent to the city for final adoption. The members of the committee, commission are from throughout the city, and these are the names. There's also information on the city's redistricting website. The things I'm going to cover are going to start off with the basics of redistricting, talk about the commission process and the rules, the principles that we'll be using in the redistricting, talk about communities of interest. I'll do a demonstration of the Districtdar mapping tool. And then we'll have an opportunity for a community of interest testimony. I know we already have some people waiting, so hopefully, we can get through this presentation so they can have their voice heard. And then we'll talk about the remaining hearing schedule. So first off, the reason that we're doing this work, the reason that we're redistricting is because in order to protect two key constitutional rights, we need to rebalance the districts every 10 years based on the most recent decennial census. The reason we rebalance the two constitutional protections that are at play are, one, the idea of equal representation under the 14th Amendment, the idea that everybody has equal access to their government. And in this sense, equal access to the government means that everybody has a district where they are represented by a council member or a county supervisor or school board member or any other elected body, and that their representative power is equal to everybody else. The second part of it is the idea of one person, one vote. And that is that when you're voting in an election, that your vote is just as powerful as somebody who might live on the other side of town. And to illustrate this, I like to bring up a district where we did redistricting once in 2011, where that agency hadn't redistricted since 1950. And when they redistricted in 1950, they balanced all the districts to be equal, and then 60 years passed, and all of a sudden, they had one district that was 12,000 people, another district that had ballooned to 100,000 people. And so from a representation standpoint, that meant that the people who lived in the 12,000-person district, their voice was 12, was eight times greater than the people in the 100,000-person district. So if you had a problem, a broken streetlight in the 12,000-person district, you had a much better access to the government than if you were, there's a working streetlight, thank you. But you would have a lot better access to your government to get that problem solved in a 12,000-person district. In a 100,000-person district, mathematically, you would have to go get seven of your friends to have the same power to get your local government to respond to a broken streetlight. The voting aspect can sometimes be a little bit different because in that agency, one district had 10,000 voters, the other district had 70,000 voters. So it wasn't always the same, but what we found in Supreme Court cases recently is about three years ago, is that when we're to rebalance these districts, the primary goal is rebalancing them for that representative value. So we rebalanced districts based on people, and I'll talk about that a little bit. The 10-member commission is going to be doing a series of outreach hearings like this one. They're going to be working to identify community of interest input from the public. That community of interest input is the building blocks of future districts. You know, 20, 30 years ago, the kind of smoke-filled room redistricting would be that the only community of interest that mattered was maybe the addresses of the incumbents or some political consideration or other issues. Now, in the way that redistricting is expected to be done in the way the state law requires, we start with building blocks that are all about the communities and the people instead. And then the process of the redistricting commission will be to create redistricting plans as drafts, get public input on those, and then ultimately pass, recommend and pass a map that would go to the city council for adoption. This, the traditional criteria that we're going to use starts with that relatively equal size. Then, and the idea is that they don't have to be perfectly equal sized. We want to make sure that we are keeping districts balanced, but if me, if having one district be a little bit larger than the other in order to, you know, protect a neighborhood line or to protect a community of interest or to preserve the voting rights of a community, then, then that percentage of equality of districts can be up to 10%, meaning the biggest district can be up to 10% larger than the smallest district. Districts do need to be contiguous, meaning that districts don't hop and jump. It means the city of San Jose does have some areas that are a little bit less contiguous. And when we look at the actual map later on, you'll see there's some areas where we have either things called islands, which is an area inside the city that's part of an unincorporated area, or we might have a part of the city that's actually detached from the city itself. When we deal with that, we will talk about things being contiguous. And then if there's something that is actually the city itself not contiguous, we'll try to figure out how it can be made functionally contiguous based on how people travel or other, other criteria. Maintaining communities of interest is the critical part of the process, like I've said. And it's important to look into this issue a little bit and how we want to hear community of interest testimony. First off, a community of interest is completely subjective. It can be completely subjective. I might say my community of interest is where I go cycling, where I drop my kid off at school, where I work, where I walk my dogs, and that's my community of interest. My issues might be the streetlights and the potholes and, and the bike path and different things. So what we want to do is be open-ended and inclusive in this process. We don't want to say when people are coming and testify, well, I don't think that that is a real community of interest. We want to really try to have open eyes and look at all different types of people's interpretation of what their community of interest is. There are some communities of interest that are covered by the Voting Rights Act, by the Federal Voting Rights Act. Largely in California, it's Latinos, Asians, African-Americans, but it can be other nationalities or ethnic groups. In one state we're have, we're fortunate to be working in, there are Native American communities of interest. In Alaska, where we're doing some work, it's the Alaskan Native population. So communities of interest that are covered by the Voting Rights Act can be greater than these three categories, but these are the three categories that are most covered in California and be most of issue in, within your region. Now, while we will look at these groups as communities of interest and where we might find that your legal counsel tells you or an outside organization tells you that you need to draw districts to protect the Voting Rights Act of these populations, and you might hear people say that we need to draw majority-minority districts based on these requirements. While all that's true, we also cannot, also based on the 14th Amendment, the equal protection clause, we cannot draw districts predominantly based on race. So if a legal guidance is given that we have to create a district that's Latino, Asian, or African-American to a certain percentage, we'll do that as is required under the Federal Voting Rights Act. But outside of that, we won't say, oh, we want this district to be the Asian district or the African-American district. We're going to make sure that districts are shaped by the communities. Maybe it's the churches that that community goes to. Maybe it's the supermarkets that community shops at. Maybe it's the community center that that community utilizes. Maybe it's the language services. Maybe it's the bilingual programs. Maybe it's other things that are tied to how that community lives and works and recreates and is connected within the city. There are other communities of interest. I mentioned cultural religious groups, outdoor recreation, my cycling analogy, downtown or rural or suburban. Those are all different types of communities of interest. And there are more and more, as we do these redistrictings, we hear, you know, some really amazing stories about people's lives that help define them as communities of interest. Something that communities of interest can't be. It can't be political party affiliation. If somebody is getting on this Zoom right now and they call in and say, well, my community of interest is me and all my libertarian friends. We live on one side of town. We want to be in a district together. That cannot be utilized as a community of interest. Incumbents or candidates cannot be used as communities of interest. If I want to call in and say, I'm going to run for the city council. I want a district that has this, that's my interest, that is not a legitimate community of interest to utilize in the redistricting process. It's also hard to completely utilize as a community of interest, any communities that are either citywide or that don't have a geographic location. Somebody calls in and says, I'm left-handed and I can't buy scissors anywhere in this city. That's not really a community of interest because it's not geographically located in one part of the city. When we are encouraging people to contribute to the process through identification of their communities of interest, or when we are listening to testimony and kind of like getting that fine tuning of our, of our listening to the community about their communities of interest, these are the three things that we really want to listen for and that we want to encourage participants to provide. One is, does the community have a shared culture, characteristics, a bond, a name? Is there something you call that community of interest? Is the community geographic in nature? Where does it reside? How can it be identified? Are there geographic tools that can be used to help aid us in the process of, you know, or getting data to be part of the process of identifying that area? And third, what's the community's relationship to the jurisdiction? And how's it affected by the policymaking? One of the more creative ways I've heard of community of interest being discussed was a community of interest is a group that can be harmed by government. And the first time I heard that, it didn't, it didn't make sense to me as much, but now that I've listened to it a few times and listened to more testimony, it makes sense that if, let's say you're a community of artists, and the city government could very well harm that community of artists by making it harder for them to keep studios open and making it harder for them to have events, making it unsafe in their neighborhoods and not allowing the, for the amenities they need in order to thrive, then yeah, they could be harmed by government, and that helps reinforce their claim to be a community of interest. So we want to look at those three things, and we want to hear that, and we want people providing that information in multiple ways, as I'll describe. So here's some examples of potential communities of interest, and we like to do this like as a little game, but on Zoom, I'll just kind of answer these myself. But a group of renters who lives downtown testifies to the city's redistricting commission. Is that a community of interest? Well, I would think that it is because not only can we easily map renter versus homeowner, it's in the census data, but they also probably share an interest, whether it's, you know, a rent control issue or parking or other issues that are unique to them and different from people who live in single-family homes. And that interest is something that is likely determined in part by the city council. A part of town that has historic nature, so it's either a former hub of business or a community, or it's one that's been discriminated against. I know in this redistricting process, we've already heard somebody from the community talk about redlining. Should that be considered a community of interest? I mean, theoretically, the redlining is stopped. So is that a community of interest still, even though that's a policy that has gone away? The answer actually is yes. Historical communities and areas with historic discrimination, those scars don't disappear immediately. And the communities oftentimes are still affected by those policies of a century ago or 50 years ago or 20 years ago or two years ago. And it should be considered in the process of drawing districts. All too often, we actually see a lot of those communities split in multiple districts in a way that disenfranchises those communities. So a group of dog owners in the suburbs wanted a local park for the dogs and a water fountain. Is that a community of interest? Actually, yes. Sounds sometimes trivial, a dog park community of interest, but it is an example of people who maybe need safe streets and need services, and maybe it's a city-provided dog park or maybe it's a county divided dog park and they'll go to the county redistricting. But that can be a community of interest. A statewide group of fans of the Giants, is that a community of interest? Well, it might be a community of interest, but not really useful in the redistricting process because they probably are citywide. It's unlikely that a jurisdiction would have a lot of say over the Giants. I'm not a sports fan terribly, not a big baseball, football fan, but if a city was bringing the Giants to town and building them a stadium, and there was going to be congestion, traffic, noise, and other issues around it, then maybe it would be a community of interest. It's not that a sports facility can't be. It definitely can be, but it needs to have a connection back to the local government. One way we can get these questions answered is using a community of interest form. These are available on the website, and the idea is to get the public to participate in the process by, by putting down on paper, what is their community of interest? And that is a critical part of the, of the redistricting process. And there are certain people who will really enjoy using the online mapping tool, and there are others that maybe aren't so comfortable with using an online mapping tool, or they're not so uncomfortable with testifying in a hearing. And so in those instances, we definitely would want to have people, you know, be able to participate in a, you know, in a way where they fill out a form on the website or something like that. So it really is a way to engage the public and, and get that, those three questions So there are options for online map submissions as well, and that is something that is really new in this redistricting process. The, the redistricting in the past would have some people mapping, but it was almost always the people that were mapping were the people who had, you know, real expertise. They would hire someone like us to draw maps and participate with them in order to give them the ability to, in order to give them the ability to have that public engagement. Nowadays, it's really been democratized, and one of the companies that's been working to democratize it is Districter, and that is, I'll be going through that, that is the company that is going to be providing the mapping tool for the city. The city website, I've got to go back, I'll have to close this out. The city is using the Districter program, and what I'm going to do now is I'm going to switch out of using the PowerPoint and switch into using my webpage. So if you give me a second here, I will make that change. Alrighty. So this is the San Jose mapping tool for identifying communities of interest. This page gives information about how to do it, and this red box here allows you to select a box, select the tool to draw your community of interest. Once you get here, you can see the entire sphere of influence area for the city of San Jose, and you can then go ahead and zoom in a little bit to go try to find an area that you want to draw a community of interest. You have tools up here. This hand tool allows you to move around. This painting tool allows you to paint an area that you want to have be your community of interest. And then this tool actually allows you to go real fine tune with like a really narrow brush, just picking up like one census block at a time, or going really big and picking up a whole area, big area at a time. So what you can do with this tool is you can identify an area like this, and then you can name it. And I'm going to name this training one. And you can put information about that community of interest, and it's as easy as that. I can also create a place. I can click on the new place location, and I can put a new place dot, and then when I put that dot, I can name it something. And I can describe that. All that information that I have there, I can go ahead and click this now, and I could save it. And once I've saved it, I now have a link that I can copy and send to friends. Do that again. I have a link, or I can share it to the gallery, and I'll show you what happens when you share it to the gallery. I'm not going to show this one because we're just testing. I also, one of the things that's interesting about this tool, which I really love, is let's say that this is somebody's community of interest. And they say, but you know what? I actually have multiple communities of interest. This is my community of interest of where I live and I work and I play, but honestly, I'm a, like I said earlier, I'm a cyclist, and I've got real concerns about safety and roads and, and access and people not following the three-foot rule and police and whatever it is my concerns are. And so I now want to draw a second community of interest. I can click the plus button, I can draw the second community of interest, and it's up here in the foothills where I like to ride. And then I say, actually, you know what? I want to do a third community of interest. And my community of interest here overlaps these others. Now, look, I've created three communities of interest, and they all can be looked at. I can give names to all of them. I can describe all of them, and then I could submit and update that and save this and save this list of all of these different communities of interest. If I went and copied this to my clipboard, I could actually put this into, you know, an email or something like that and send it around. Now, if people do, as people do create these communities of interest, it'll also create, if they choose, they can, they could just email that link that they did, or they could actually go here and look at other people's communities of interest that they've drawn. So when you draw a community of interest like this, it's public, and they can go look at what somebody else drew as their community of interest. And so saving this allows us to draw this information down. All this information will be put into a common format for the commission and put into a website so that the commission can utilize this as building blocks of the eventual districts. Let me go ahead now and switch back to the PowerPoint just to finish up. So another way people can participate is in-person drawing their maps by hand and identifying that community of interest. And so this online mapping, this community mapping tool has a snapshot of the city with the neighborhoods identified, so people can go in and draw that and then write their community name, and then the description, write what their community of interest is. And we have had a great experience with these in areas that are able to use some kind of in-person engagement. And so we're really looking forward to getting these as well. And in the future, we'll have forms like this that'll be printed out, they're pretty big posters like this, printed out with actual population numbers. And those posters with the population numbers, people can actually draw districts, meaning they can add up the number of the population of each district and submit that as their community of interest testimony. We have upcoming meetings that are going to be held. Obviously, right now, we're at the 2:00 PM meeting in District 6, but these, these meetings are being held in order to ensure that we can get out to the whole community and have the opportunity for the community to give outreach. And for more information, definitely check out the city's redistricting website. There's a lot of great content there and multiple ways to engage and be a part of the process. And with that, I will go ahead and close up the share. And I want to thank especially the people who have been here this whole time from the community who are calling in. I thank them for waiting. And Tony, do you want to take over? Would you like for me just to, I think you have to as the host, take over.
I'm going to take over, and I'm going to go to the public comments. So the first person with the hand up is Mike I.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Mike I, and I'm calling from Equality, California, the state's largest LGBTQ-plus civil rights organization. Thank you for taking the time to hear from me about the local LGBTQ community of interest in the city of San Jose. Redistricting impacts policy goals that are specific to our struggle for equality and that can be impacted by fair redistricting. That is why Equality, California is engaging in the redistricting process to ensure such fair representation for the LGBTQ-plus community. Currently, Equality, California is developing a data set and a map with 831,000 data points and growing that can be used as a guide for work to understand where our community lies, where our community's strength lies in the state. We know at this time, our LGBTQ-plus data set will demonstrate the strength of our community in these neighborhoods, and you should expect that several members of our community will, will be participating in the process as well. I am calling today because Equality, California has identified very significant geographic-specific LGBTQ-plus communities of interest in San Jose. Our data shows dense LGBTQ-plus clusters in downtown San Jose and parts of Rose Garden bounded by Race Street, the Alameda, the Alameda, and Negli Avenue, which are included in San Jose Council Districts 3 and 6. These areas have served as major building blocks on the San Jose LGBTQ community and have a history of voting cohesively to elect candidates of choice. This LGBTQ-plus community is physically, historically, and politically united, and we ask that we ask, and we ask that the LGBTQ community be kept together, embracing the true solidarity in one council district. Thank you for taking the time today, and we are looking forward to continuing our conversation with you about the importance of representation that can be achieved through this process.
Thank you. Give me just a second. The next, the next speaker is Blair Beetham.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beetham here. Thank you for this meeting today. I'm sorry that more people couldn't attend to make it a quorum. It was informative. It was nice to better understand like the specifics of what you want to talk about for each district and their relationship to the practices of government itself. I haven't been able to, you know, fully state, you know, the wonders of open public policies for the future of technology, surveillance technology and data collection at this time for a community. They're very much connected to how government and community works together, and they're the ideas of peace and sustainability and open democratic practices that can bring us out of the era of war and 9/11 and into a new era of positive sustainability and peace, basically. It's really, really interesting work. It's basically how to leave, you know, an era of war and move into an era of peace and sustainability with the ideas of equity and reimagine also. Good luck in your decision-making, what you have to do in your redistricting decisions. I think we can address something that's really decisions. I think we can address something that's really, really hopeful, in how you redistrict, and just how the future of our community works. So, you know, it is with these practices that can be a lot of help to navigate our future, and what is our good future. So I just wanted to remind yourselves of that. And I guess also remind, just to really state, that we possibly have, you know, natural disaster issues in the Bay Area upcoming for the next decade, that I hope you can really consider in your decision-making in redistricting. Possible earthquake, large earthquake in the Bay is very possible, along with wildfire, sea level rise. All that has to be hopefully included in your redistricting decisions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Paul.
Oh, man, yes, I just made it in time. My phone got kicked off. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Paul, for your presentation. I was at the last meeting, and it's thorough. It's very concise. It's very simple to follow. My name is Paul Soto, and I'm a lifelong resident of San Jose. I'm a sixth-generation San Josean, and I, my entire family was redlined out of the Horseshoe area, out of the Gardner area, okay? And what happened is in 1938, that railroad that goes through the Horseshoe, well, District 6 is the one that put that railroad there. And then the freeway in the 1960s ran right through the other side, and it created this island that Paul was referencing earlier. It created this island that now, it was neglected. That area was neglected. Oh, yeah, it was ran with gangs, and drugs, and yes, it had all that, but it was mine. That was my area. That was my neighborhood. Now, it is probably one of the most valuable pieces of property on Earth, on this Earth right now, because of its proximity to Google. District 6 now wants to commandeer that entire area. What they did is strategically got the historical landmark status for all of those houses on the south side of the tracks. Because on the north side of the tracks, the high-speed, the high-speed train that's going to be coming through, guess what? Four tracks, four of them. That means that strategically, they protected all of that one area, all that block area, at the expense of the Horseshoe. This kind of stuff has gone on too long. I ain't got no more tolerance for it, and it has to stop. It just has to stop. No more euphemistic terms, no more, "Oh, well, we'll take a look at that. We'll have a committee." No. The redlining, and the racist redlining that accumulated wealth in Willow Glen, in the Rose Garden, it needs to just stop, right here. And the way that you can remedy that is by ensuring that those lines stay precisely where they are, and that it is commonly acknowledged that it's because of the redlining that happened, that that has to happen. Thank you.
There's no more hands up. While I still have you guys on here, I just wanted to do a quick view of the website. You don't have to stay here for this. We will not, because this is a regular meeting, we're not going to be doing public comment, or open forum, I should say. We did public comment. So if you go to the City Clerk's website, or you go to redistricting, you'll see the Draw Your Community of Interest paper form, and a link to the District R website. So you can either remember DistrictR.org, or you can come here to the redistricting website. We do have a community of interest survey form in multiple languages. So if you know somebody who maybe speaks English, but isn't comfortable with it, please direct them here to get more information. So we do have those in multiple languages. And with that, since there's no more hands up, and since this isn't an official meeting, we don't need to officially vote to end the meeting or anything. So thank you, guys, for showing up. We will reschedule District 6 for a later date and time. I can't tell you what that is. I'll have to work with the community room to make sure, you know, to find a date where we can fit. But thank you, guys, and thank you, Paul, for your presentation. This is recorded. I'm going to go ahead and add this to our YouTube channel, along with our regular public hearings, because that presentation was so great, and it's so clear. I want to make sure people can see that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.